The purpose of today is to provide you with as much information as we all have about the plan. And provide some opportunity for each of you to ask questions. So we have some microphones here, so we can try to get as many questions answered as we possibly can. I want to, before we begin, acknowledge the work of three or four people that I have a privilege of working with who have been very instrumental in putting this plan together on all our behalf. They're sitting here, that's Kathryn Spitzer, Susan Zieko, and Joyce Suzuki. And Steve Green is up at the door. And I introduce them and thank them publicly for all their hard work. Not to thank them, but I also want you to see them, because if there are very specific or technical questions that you want to go forward after this session today, they would be the people that you would want to connect with. I also want to acknowledge the leadership of the CSU EU. I had the opportunity on Tuesday this week to meet with them in a very productive session. I don't know if they're all in today, but if they are, I want to acknowledge them and thank them for the very valuable advice, input, and counsel that they provided to us in the creation of the plan along with the leadership of the UAT. Okay, so today's discussion is about the so-called furloughs. And let me try to provide some general information, and then we'll do questions. First, who does the furlough apply to? The furlough is going to be applying to the following employee classifications at this time. We, our management people, anyone within the management personnel plan is affected. People who are reflected, represented by the CSU EU are affected. Our confidential employees are affected. And people represented by the UAT positions are also affected. So those are the four categories at the moment who are affected by the furlough plan. There are some groups within those classifications who are exempted, so I want to clear that up first. First of all, if you are an individual in any of those classifications that I represented, and you are paid for 100% by a grant or a contract, you are exempt from the furlough. If a portion of your salary is taken care of by a grant or a contract, that portion is exempted, but your general fund portion is not. I'm sure there'll be some questions about that as we go. If you are a CSU EU employee and you function as a dispatcher, you are exempt from the furlough. Our dispatchers are also exempt from the furlough situation. So those two classifications, I want to clear that up, that those folks are not. Basically, what a furlough is, is a reduction in salary. And the salaries of all of us in this room who are represented by one of those employee classifications that I mentioned, you're going to see that change in your salary about 10% with the check that I kind of consider the September check. It's actually for the period of time that we work in August that we get paid for in September. And Susan will probably actually will tell us the date the warrant is paid. But it's usually around the end of August or very early, the first day or two of September. And that's when you're first going to see the reduction in your paycheck. And it's going to stay that way for the remaining months, all the way through June, as we impose, as the CSU imposes what was agreed to, this reduction in salary. It turns out to be, on an annual basis, just a little bit more than 9% of your salary, but it's going to feel like 10% because we didn't take it in July. Because we didn't have the furlough approved in July. So the actual pay cut is being spread over 11 months. It will feel a little bit more like 10% because that first month was eliminated. In terms of when we will take the furlough, this is the plan that we have approved through January. And there are some reasons why we have not been able to develop a full plan beyond January, which I'll explain. But let's just talk about the period starting in August and ending in January. In August, we are going to ask all the employees who are affected to identify two furlough days that they would like to take. They will be pretty much at your choice, but have to be approved by your corporate administrator. So everyone has to try to figure out two days in August that they will use as a furlough day, and that your corporate administrator know, and that will happen. There are some other caveats associated with the August plan. After discussion, we would like to ask everyone to take their furlough days in August during the first two weeks in August. The reason why that's important is because the last two weeks in August, as everyone knows, are very important weeks for our move-in period, for our questioning and returning students. And so the degree that we accommodate the furloughs in the first two weeks in August will be a very positive benefit to our student body and their parents. So people need to take a look at that consideration. There is one classification on people who are currently having a little bit of difficulty with having to do the first two weeks in August, which are people who are being paid currently on what we call the 980 plan. If you're familiar with the 980 plan, you know what I'm talking about. And it's not possible for you to take the furlough days in the first two weeks in August and still comply with the 980 plan. So we're going to have to take away the 980 plan for this period, and Human Resources will be notifying everyone in the appropriate way. The trouble with this, our collective bargaining agreement that requires us to give 21 days notice in order to remove the 980 plan. And so when you give the 21 days notice, you miss the first two weeks in August. So for people who are on 980 for this period, they will have the choice of taking their furlough days on four weeks within August as opposed to just the first two weeks. And there are very few folks that are affected by this. But those of you who are here will be able to work with you in that regard. Another word about when you can take the furloughs. As I mentioned, you can take them anytime you want in August, but you're not allowed to take more than one in a week. So you can't take two furlough days the first week in August, it's not allowed. You must only take one furlough day per week. So that's how August will work. September will work pretty much the same way. Two furlough days in September, at your discretion with the approval of your administrator. All you can do is figure out which two days you'd like. One a week, you can't do more than one a week. And you identify which ones you would like. Same will happen in October, the same plan. November is a little tricky. In November, you can only get one furlough day that you would take at your discretion, because the campus is going to close, as we have always closed, on the day after Thanksgiving. Traditionally, people either have to take a personal holiday or vacation for the day after Thanksgiving. And now you won't have to do that, because we'll do a furlough day on the day after Thanksgiving. In December, you also don't have a choice. Because we've made a decision that we're going to close the campus on December the 24th. This is Thanksgiving Day, Thanksgiving Day, Christmas Eve. And we're also going to have a campus closure on December 31st, New Year's Eve. Everyone is already expecting to be not working on December 31st, because that's the week we're supposed to be training the holidays. But normally, what you would have to do is take a vacation day or a personal holiday on the 31st. But because of furlough, you will not have to do that, you can save that for other time. December 24th is not a teaching day, it's generally a very quiet day. And we'll close the campus on that day, because it's not a teaching day. And the vast majority of all of the students have already left. Some of them wonder what will happen if Governor Schwartz Jr. gives us the traditional four hours. It's happened every year, I've been affiliated with the CSU. It may or may not happen this year. But if we get it, not to worry, you will just get those four hours that you will be able to take sometime at your choice over the next six months. So not to worry if that happens. In January, we're going to close the campus on the 8th and the 22nd. Okay, so you don't have discretion on there, there are two Fridays. And so we will be closed on the 8th and the 22nd. Faculty and students are not that yet, so should not have any major impact on instructional processing days. So that will be generally how we will accomplish the furlough. We then have to figure out what to do with the spring semester. And we're waiting to see what's going to happen in the spring semester on a number of important features. Most importantly, what will be the outcome of the vote in our other bargaining units, of CFA, APC, and the SCTC? These organizations have not yet come to agreement, or may not come to agreement, with the trustees on furlough. It's very difficult, if not impossible, to close the campus and the campus closure if these other bargaining units are working. So we have to wait and see what they do. And we should know relatively soon what's going to happen. In fact, I learned just a short period of time ago that we will know whether or not we have agreements with those unions by the 28th day of July, which is next week. And once we know that information, we can come back together and develop some more thoughts about how we will deal with the spring semester, again in consultation in our normal way. So hopefully, by the end of next week or early following week, we will be able to give you more information about what will happen in the spring semester. But as one idea, and I have to point this out. We do know that we have to achieve, let's see, February, March, April, May, June, we have to get 10 days there, plus we have to make that two that we didn't take in July. So in the spring term, we find that we have 12 furlough days. And we have to do it over those months. And one of the thoughts that's being considered in public support is closing the spring break. At least four days for the spring break period, because we don't have teaching days for now. But I'd rather not get into too much detail about the spring until we find out more what happens with the other bargaining units and the plan can be developed for the president's consideration, and then ultimately be sent to the chancellor's office for their review and approval. So that's kind of how it's going to work, in a nutshell. What's the next step that's going to happen, and then we can start to do some questions, is that Susan Zieko, who's just been doing an extraordinary job in helping implement this, is going to be sending an email to your corporate administrator or to your supervisor. That email will probably arrive in the next day or two, would be my guess, or three or four. And what will be in that email are all the people that that particular administrator, most of them are in this room, have this responsibility for, who supervise. And so what's going to have to happen is that that supervisor is going to have to get with their affected employees and identify which days over this period in July that are not mandated closures those employees wish to take for their furlough days. Then they have to turn that back in, so the payroll has a record of that, and we will proceed. People have asked me throughout the week, well, what happens if my plans change? Of course, your plans are going to change. It's natural that you cannot predict with precision what's going to happen over the next six months. And the furlough day that you may have identified and had approved, you may wish to change that. And this morning, when I met with all the corporate administrators, I asked them, and I think they are all there, are very willing to be flexible and sensitive to the fact that we will have to have the ability to make changes in accommodations as people's lives dictate. At the same time, I have to say, we do have a university to run, and we've got some 7,500 full-time students that will shortly be here. And we need to make certain that we're able to respond to their needs as well as well as to the needs of the faculty and the student service professionals that support them. So that's the issue. But having said that, it's one of the issues that I really would like to stress, and I actually committed this to the CSU EU. Life will not be the same for any of us with a 10% reduction in what we do. When you're not here 16 hours a week, that means that 16 hours of work is not going to get done. And it is certainly not the intention of our president or our trustees to incur the worst speed of. So everyone is going to have to understand that particularly for the CSU EU employees and the confidential's and the MPTs, that they're simply not going to be able to deliver the traditional amount of work that they have done in the past, it is just simply not achievable. And so we've all made a commitment to organize labor, that we will work very hard and make sure that that did not happen. And if it does start to happen, we will take some steps to remedy. So I really do want to impress that point. I also want to stress the point that we've agreed as part of the bargaining process that we will not increase the number of student assistants we have in a material way to make up for the loss of work that CSU EU is talking to be doing. So that's the second commitment that I think needs to be clear. So we'll have to see how we will battle through this issue. And one of the reasons that our president is particularly supportive of the closure, of the global closure, that we're literally shut down the campus, that means that no one is here. And there is no work that's really happening on those days, and that makes it easier to avoid the pressure that those of us who are furloughed we can back and make up. But we don't think we're going to be able to do that in the spring, that would be the desired outcome. It's too soon to do it for the fall, which is why we cannot do it for the fall off, because the course is going to lose its place and so forth. But that is certainly a goal to try to achieve as we go this spring. Let's see, I think I've covered all the specific questions that people may have. There could be others that will come up. So rather than me talking to you for all this time, let me stop and see if there are questions. And I suspect that as some questions come forward, that will shed light on some of the other issues that might be underlying here. Particularly, I'm sure that there are some people in the room here who are represented by APC, or CFA, or SCTC, who may be wondering what's going to happen to you. And I'll try to speculate and give you some answers to those questions, should they exist. But primarily, I wanted to make sure that the CSU EU calls the managers and the confidential's and the physicians to have their questions answered. Question right up there.
Well, one thing that I think would be nice to explain is, what is a week?
Okay, good question. What is a week? What does that really mean in CSU, SCSU, my word? A week for us begins on Sunday and ends on Saturday. So that's what we define as a work week. So somehow during that work week, you need to take your furlough days, one per work week, two per month. Is that clear for me? Good, yeah. Can't see everyone, so just yell out, yes sir. I got you. And we don't like it down here, so everyone here, if you want to. As you come down. Yes, sir.
Is any special approval required if it makes sense for us to take our furlough days in the latter half of August?
If it is the case that that's presenting a good, important thing that you need to do, yeah. You should do that, and you would want to submit that to Susan, or did we say to Joyce? And then what I would like to do is ask the vice president for Student Affairs to consider that particular person's job, to see if it is essential to meeting the needs of move-in for students. We've met with some folks this morning who are in our Sally program in the School of Extended Education, and they really do not interact very much with move-in on the traditional academic year, so they would prefer to do it in a different fashion. So yeah, we need to be as flexible as we can. But we're really trying, and so much of your effort, all of your, and it's a great point to acknowledge it and congratulate you, really goes into that first, those last two weeks in August to get the place ready for the opening of the year, that's the reason for it.
I understand the reason. So it's not just our corporate administrators approval we need, we also need to contact...
The corporate administrator, the HR people, and HR people will determine whether that can be.
Thank you.
Sure. Other questions? Yeah.
What about the first two weeks of August, will the summer session classes?
Yeah, will be open, so...
And also intercession, yes. I've worked with some of the faculty who teach intercession in class the weeks the first two weeks of August. As well as, will the intercession classes in January, will there be classes on Fridays in January?
There could very well be classes on a Friday, and we'll have to work with them. It may be if the intercession is going to present a problem for the January days of closure, we might have to revisit that. But for August, the campus will be open. There are not campus closures in August, it's just that in some cases, the services to the faculty teaching may be limited on the days that the CSU EU is furloughing. But not everyone should furlough on the same day, which is the idea. So that's what the administrator comes in to try to balance the needs of making sure the university works along with the bizarre employee. And hopefully, a balance can be reached. If the balance cannot be reached, ultimately, the administrator will have to make a call. But I've asked them, the president's behalf, to try to... Yeah?
I have three questions, and they'll be very brief. Will pay warrants be delayed by a day or two for the interest, for it to collect more interest? Is that something that the state is considering doing, delaying pay warrants to get...
I can't remember if that's why, I would say that would not be true.
Okay, well, that's a number that I wrote in paper, so can't, you know, press data, guys.
Trust me, maybe, you can never be sure what you're hearing.
That's another...
That's another town hall.
Yeah. I represent APC, I'm the Contract Enforcement Board. And I know that we are currently in the throes of getting the ballot back to our members, and we will have a decision by noon on July 27th. But part of our concern is with the residential life people, because they are 24-hour a day. So even if the furlough is passed through APC and we agree to do that, how is that going to affect our residential life people on campus? Is it something that they're going to have to...
It's a very, it's a very timely question. Some of you may know my very first job in higher education was at an RLC. And I know that RLCs are on-call and work seven nights a week, and that's their job. So we have a call into the chancellor's office to say that RLCs, we might have to take a look at them because they just never really stopped being here. And we don't have clarification yet. But I think there are a number of situations like this that might come up. So get back on that. Right now, we don't have to worry about it till today, but by the 28th, we'll have it.
Well, and so that's what part of our bargaining has been with the chancellor's office, is about specific groups of people within our unit that have 24, you know, seven-day-a-week positions. And then my last question is, part of the CSU tentative agreement is that we start labor council meetings once the furloughs are accepted and put into place. Is that something that we will be embarking on once the wave has passed?
I think, if I'm not mistaken, some of the things in the university has a labor council that needs periodically. So I would, am I correct, Joyce?
Currently, we meet with CSU EU, and we've agreed that we would make furloughs part of that regular agenda. If APC also has the furloughs, then we would also include APC in any kind of meeting.
Okay, I just, that's good to know, because that was part of the CSU tentative agreement, is they wanted us to participate in a labor council on our campus, which for APC, it's always been kind of a debunk thing, we didn't even know it existed. So I appreciate that, thank you.
Another, in case of, okay, I'll let you do the question, but remind me to come back to the folks who are currently exempt, and on the furlough leave, they become non-exempt. It was important that we got to talk about this. Someone reminds me of the comment on the faculty, but Vern, you have a question.
Is there anything you can share with us about commencement?
About commencement? commencement, we'll go on. We will avoid a furlough week time around commencement if we can. Similar to what we're doing in move-in, I already have the question from our facilities team and many other groups, that if you were to do a campus closure on Friday in the spring, would you avoid the day before graduation? Very difficult day, so yeah, it's a very outstanding question. Vern, we'll do our best. We will make certain that graduation goes on, and the appropriate solider for our student administration. It means that we probably will not furlough around that week. Mark, forgive me, I have a little part to do, but I'll be right back.
Yeah, I'm representing Extended Education and following up. I want to thank this team for working so well. We have the very unique privilege of fitting those odd scheduled times. And there are a lot of things still to be worked out, but they have worked extremely well with us. The clarification and question built into it that I have is that Extended Education is a fully self-supported unit. No work is required at all. Are we still required to furlough?
The answer is yes. We have a number of similar organizations, so we should outline them. That would include our health center, which is pretty much fully self-supporting, our recreation center, which is pretty much self-supporting, Extended Education, housing, residence life. These organizations receive no general fund support, but these employees are represented by the CSU EU and whatnot. And so the question comes, so okay, if you furlough them, you don't really get to take the savings, so why would you do it? The CSU has made the decision that they will be furloughed, and the savings will accrue to those units. So the furlough savings, in this case, would accrue to the state of education, or to the health center, or to housing, or to residence life, as appropriate in other of its happens. And that's an important point, not so much for Extended Education, but in these other fee-based programs, as part of the overall budget reduction, this gives me an opportunity to plug the town hall next week on the Thursday of the day of July, where we'll be talking about the budget plan in general. So I encourage you all to come back, we're going to talk about that. But part of the budget reduction plan beyond furlough is a reduction in enrollment. When you reduce enrollment, you reduce the number of students that are here, that reduces the amount of fee revenue that is generated in the health center, in IRA, and so on and so on. So the furloughing effect will help those increase, not so much on your base market, but more than likely, your business will grow. So the furloughing will be a little different on your base. But yeah, the answer to the question in a nutshell is, the self-support program with the exception of grants, will take the furlough, yes. There's a question right here, hold on a while.
Yeah, I was wanting to articulate the decision as to why, why you not increase student assistance.
The CSU EU understandably is concerned that as we furlough down the number of CSU EU people, we do not want their work to be taken up by a student system. And that is a fear that many members of the CSU EU have. And so when the agreement was negotiated by the CSU bargaining team working at the chancellor's office, that provision was put in there, that the campus would not increase in a dramatic way the number of students that it has on the table. So for my policy message in spring semester last year to this year, that's the reason for it.
Does that include teacher's assistants and things like that that assist faculty? Like in the classroom and that sort of thing? Because that is one thing that will be helpful in this situation.
Yeah, some of the classifications that when you get into that are represented by a different union, the UAW, and then in some cases, even CFA, if I might be correct. So I think I defer that question, because I'm not typically competent in answering this. And until we know what's going on with CFA and APC, some of those issues remain a little bit far. There's a question up there, isn't it?
How are we going to transfer those on our attendance recording?
Quick question, on the attendance recording, for the non-exempt people, you would do it the way you normally do, if you just show that you're not here, correct? Or everyone, not, but for an exempt employee, it's a little more tricky, because this is the question I wanted to come to. If you are an exempt employee, which includes a variety of people within CSU EU as well as nearly other managers, then during the weeks that you're furloughing, it's very important that you not work more than 32 hours. In fact, it would be very, very unusual that you should do that. And you should try not to work less than 32 hours, try to hit 32 hours. The reason is that if you work more than 32 hours, we have to pay you. And that sort of defeats the purpose of a furlough, because you're attempting to save money. And if you work less than 32 hours on the furlough, we have to dock you either with a patient's sick leave or some dollar. So you want to try to get the 32 right on the money, if you can. Obviously, sometimes that's not going to work out precisely, but that would be the goal. It's important to your unit that you not go over the 32, because as we develop the budget, we are literally going to remove that amount of money that's associated with this furlough and give it back to the state on a one-time basis. So that when you come in and charge more than 32 hours in that week, your own department is not going to have that money to pay, and they'll have to get it to their operating center, which would be a bad thing. So I have to envisage with the president to find out how we want to set up the procedure to approve what would be called overtime during the furlough period, because it should happen only in the most extraordinary situations. But as we all know, in our community university, there always are extraordinary situations. And in some cases, people who are being furloughed, we may have to work beyond the 32. But we're going to try very hard to minimize that, because the whole strategy behind this is to reduce the amount of retro expenses for this 19-year. And it also gives me a chance to reiterate that this furloughing situation is only for the 19-year. We don't know what's going to happen in the interim. But it's used as a temporary measure for the 19-years.
But then for the rest of us on the day we're off, we just put that in?
Help me there, Susan.
Larry is saying that all appropriate administrators are going to be receiving a list from our office, telling them what employees report to them. We're going to have some instructions on there on how to report that on your absence report.
And forgive us for not having everything perfect. I mean, this is going to be a pretty rapid turnaround, but I think within the next year or so, that most of it is... But great question. Laura, would you want one?
Laura, I wondered if you could talk about the interesting tension or nuance between trying to keep the university running and serve the students and do what we're doing, but also demonstrate to the state how devastating this is to us.
Yeah, I think Laura makes a superb point. Most of us are in this room and working at the university because we somehow care about education, care about students, and that's why we're here, not with other organizations. So it's very difficult for us to reconcile cutting back a service to a professor, or cutting back a service to a parent, or to a student, or... It's very almost contradictory. It's very almost contradictory to who we are and what we're, we're, we're. Yet at the same time, for reasons beyond our power, we're being hit with a massive budget cut. And as I said earlier in my comments, I don't think life can be the same. I think it's a difficult balance and I think each of us are going to have to struggle through that. I was talking with my own, I was talking with my wife last night at a speech, how do I do this? How do I still try to do what I always do every year, but then still say to the state, hey, I can't do that. I'm missing 16 hours a week. It's a lot of hours. Not about you, that's what I try to do quite a bit in that. So I don't, I think everyone has been struggling with that one role. And we'll have to see. But that's the point, I think one of the reasons Ruben made his speech himself is why Ruben felt so strongly about the closure because the closure makes a strong statement. It says to the world, we are closed. It's not the same. This is not happening the way we usually do it. And it takes away the work and the people, and that's why I think CSU EU, like and Ruben were very much for it. But it does have an impact on students. It's one of the issues to say, what do we do if these other students, when they close the library, when they close the rec center, what do they do, just hang out in the apartment? So how do we reconcile those questions? You know, so it's a hard one. And that's where I think we have to struggle through this closure question for spring. Susan?
Yeah, we have a lot of athletic events and performing arts events on Fridays. How are we getting done with that?
Well, for the fall, it will be pretty much as normal because the university will be open on all Fridays except the one after Thanksgiving and Christmas time. And that's pretty non-event. But that's the, that's the right, that's the point, that the Chancellor's office is asking, how do you plan to handle athletics? I've actually, and he has shown me the substantial number of competitions which you are contractually obligated to fulfill. And I haven't had a chance to meet with Jeff Lamy on the CPA side, but I'm sure it's similar. That's what makes the closures so difficult. Closures are hard in academies because of universities, as you all know, increasingly are centered by 24 activities. To actually shut one down turns off to be really hard, especially when you're residential. We know, right, I'm working with Neil on this side, Neil, we have 3,000, from 3,001 to 2,000 students that are going to be with us in a few weeks that we need to reconcile the limit to. We're going to do that on Friday to the world, or not, we were hard to do that. It's like the RSC question. That's what makes a closure hard. And it involves the question, how do you balance it? It isn't the same. The campus budget is going down $12 million. We'll talk more about that next week. $12 million is huge. Very huge. And the furlough only is heading six months, $6 million of that, if everyone agrees to do it, that'd be $6 million to go. Let's see if there's another question from someone I haven't, but I'll certainly come back now. Yes?
I work 60%, 38-hour days a week.
Yep.
And so if you divide it between five, it's 4.8 hours is a day for me.
Yep.
So would I be required to take 4.8 hours off and then work a few hours or should, or, you know, or do I split that?
Susan won't help me. I thought you had people who are harsh-hearted on this question.
There are a group of people that we've identified like yourself who are working reduced time bases. And we know that altering your schedule to that meeting is going to be a little bit different. So we're going to work with your appropriate administrators, but you're right, you're going to have to reduce your work week to the equivalent of what you're getting.
Okay. Yes.
What, what does a campus closure mean, especially if you're not focused on furlough?
Well, I think a campus closure would mean, ideally, in the perfect world, if it could happen, is that we would not be teaching on that day. And the only services that would be likely to be provided on that day would be services that are provided by the police department, which are out there as well as services that would be provided by probably one building service engineer who bunches our board of tenants a little equipment there. And probably our RSCs who are worried about our residential student population from a developmental perspective. And the dining service people that would service the residential floors. That would be probably the minimum.
Without ID.
Key, would be sort of what we have on the weekend, I would say. But other questions come to light, what about the health center? What about the rec center? What about the library? What about the branch offices? These questions are, quite frankly, unresolved. And what about extended education? Extended, these things feel a little more tricky. And we're lucky, we don't have to worry too much about it for next month. But we must answer those questions in our four weeks of the spring. And we will, but we haven't, we haven't. There's a question I gave.
In light of what happened with the contact with the Chancellor, the Chancellors of the two systems a few years ago, where there was a promise made that the budget would slowly come back to what it had been, what kind of guarantees being developed that this will be a temporary situation and not continue?
I don't think there is any guarantee. I think, I mean, you have to make, take your own perspective of what you think about the legislation and the governor. I do believe our Chancellor is sincere in his view, tried actually within meeting with him not long ago, where he was very strong, his view is it should be a one-year and one-year only thing. But Dr. Regan and Board of Trustees, these are in many ways, they have, they're a diversity or they deal also with the legislation and the governor. So it's hard to know. I don't think I could begin to predict what kind of level it will run up. We'll have a little bit more on that topic perhaps next week. But I know what I could tell you, I almost have done. I think California and the nation have a ways to go to get the economy back. And I think that's something we all reckon out of, and we'll just have to see. But I've been doing budgeting in the University of Harvard for 23 years. I've never been in one like this. My journey, take one day at a time, because it is just too hard, it's a different, we have to get ours all scheduled up. We have to get our students who are doing it to do the best we can to teach them within the context of this most bizarre environment.
Can you refresh my memory on the holidays that we take between December 24th and 31st? With Veterans Day, it's President's Day, and now a furlough day. I just, I just need a refresher.
Sure. We moved four or five. We used to be able to fly, but then Veterans Day kind of got jumped up. We have to celebrate that now on Veterans Day. And you can move furlough day on Veterans Day if you wish, by the way. Someone asked me that earlier. And that brings me back to the holiday glance back to that question, too. But we don't have enough to get all five days between the this year Christmas and the year were short-lived, but movable holidays. I think we were thinking to perhaps move Washington's Day at one point, but now we won't do that because we're going to put a furlough day there.
And that was in the intent, 2010.
2010. So we don't have to deal with this year because we have a furlough.
And no, no furlough days will be taken or scheduled for holidays.
Right.
All the holidays remain the same.
You mentioned some discussion that they were, the university was going to say, okay, we just won't get paid for our holidays. And that goes to be furlough days in effect. If that's not going to happen, so all the normal holidays that we enjoy, you'll still get them, you'll still be paid for them. Other questions? Yeah?
That moment about not being able to put two of your furlough together.
Right.
If you schedule vacation times, would you be in that restriction?
You're, you're okay. You can like, I kind of went myself, taking a vacation in September if the president agreed. And I normally take five vacation days there, but this time I'll do one of my furlough days for that week. So I'll take one furlough day and then four vacation days and that's okay.
And if I was to have two vacation days, first and second, I can't replace a vacation furlough day?
Not in that week. No, no, one of them you can do. We might not rely that it is mutually equal, but it's an important one, and it's one that we really have to take a very, very close attention to. In our state, if you are not working more than two days, two or more days in a work week, in any period, in any 52-week period, you technically become eligible for unemployment compensation. Which is the reason why they're only allowed to take one furlough, one furlough day per work week. Make sense? Except once in a 52-week period, we're allowed to take four in a work week. Don't ask me why, but you are. And that's why I'd like to work for the spring break. But there is a reason. It's not, because I would say we should compete too, it would be easier to make a long weekend or whatnot. And I think the CSU would love to be able to do that where operationally possible, but the unemployment compensation says no, you cannot do that, otherwise you would be out of unemployment and it causes the whole state of other issues to come to play.
Do you do a Friday?
I'm sorry?
Do you do a Friday?
You can do a Friday and Monday, that is correct. You can. That's why I pointed out that Veterans Day, because it could be an opportunity where you might be able to create a little mini break for yourself by taking a look at that. Yeah, we're back.
What are the ramifications if the CFA does not go furlough? Does that have any repercussions on the staff as far as payoffs?
No, the CFA decision on furlough will have no impact on the CSU EU decision on furlough because that's already been agreed to. There would be implications within the faculty bargaining unit if there's not a furlough, but that would stay within that bargaining unit. That's all the group for APC and S and T C. We will achieve the savings in personnel one way or another. That's what we're told by the, that's the strategy of the system. CSU EU and management and confidential are choosing to do it in furlough. That's what we're agreeing to. Other bargaining units may choose something else. Yeah.
Can you tell us what your plans are for saving the other $6 million?
I cannot. But we should have some better knowledge for you next week. What's happening is that each of the vice presidents are busy working on plans for their share of that reduction. And it's difficult for them to actually complete their plans. I'm not trying to avoid the question, but it's true, what's difficult for them to complete their plans until they kind of know what the other bargaining unit's going to do with furlough. So that makes a big difference. The reduction is substantially different whether there's furlough or not, particularly to academic affairs and student affairs. A little bit of initiative to manage with S and T C. But we will be, we will have a plan, a rough plan, and we'll be presenting to the President's Budget Advisory Committee next Thursday morning, it will be rough, it will be sketchy, it will be the best we can do with the information we have. And then that's the reason why there's a town hall in this room, we moved it from the library here. So I can share with you the details of that plan. But in that show, in addition to furlough, there will be unallocated reductions and there will be a reduction in enrollment. We do know that the CSU trustees have said to Snow State University over the next two academic years, you will reduce your enrollment by 450 FTEs. So we'll go from 7,500 target count to 7,500. We don't have to do that all in 2010, but we have to complete it by 2011. And our academic affairs folks are struggling now determining how quickly that enrollment can be reduced, given the fact that suppression classes for all intents and purposes, they were invented. So those will be the three big pieces. Some kind of compensation issue that we're talking about furlough or something else. Enrollment reduction, the trustees already put fee increase that they acted on yesterday at 20%. And some other general unallocated reductions that likely we didn't have planned. Yeah, Dorothy?
Is that 450 reduction in addition to what we were supposed to already do?
No, it's actually revised. In a former town hall sometime in March or maybe February, I probably reported that we were planning a 9% reduction, which is closer to 700 FTEs. And since that time, the CSU system changed and they said for the very, very small campuses and every time they had it in modernization, they're not going to change their enrollment. The little campuses like us, our medium size, we're going to get around 6%. Some of the larger campuses go up to as high as 10%. So they're just revised to be 450. And actually works a little bit far ahead. Susan?
Yeah, could you describe, because as things evolve, there'll be lots of changes. How are you going to plan to consult and communicate from various constituencies about dealing with whatever comes down the road? More town hall meetings or?
Well, yeah, we, we sort of began this tradition of town hall on budget in the spring, we did one a month. So I would imagine we would continue them. I would think we would continue them. I generally rely on Dan Condon and his fine community university fair, his communication to assist. And then of course, we'll talk in the Senate Audit Committee about to do that. We'll need to facilitate students' leadership, figure out what the students' perspective are. Probably in times like this, it's most urgent and most important that we have open dialogue about what we're doing and what we're thinking and what's happening. But I think the campuses try to do that as effectively as they can, which is the reason we need today on this particular issue. So yeah, I would imagine. Joyce, did you have an option?
Yes, we're also planning to post the FAQs that you got. As we get questions, we'll update them and send them over to Jean Wass to post on the university's website. And we're planning to do and get an email account for like furlough questions. You can email in a specific question and have that question answered. And if it's something that's general, we'll then put it in the FAQs and post it.
I also want to, we're very fortunate to have these three women and Steve Green up there who would help us. Jamie Russell, Kat, all the HR team, Diana Wilson. They are available to you. This is uncertain, this is confusing. I forgot what we're going to do, how it affects you. Call them, don't hesitate. That's the great thing about our small campus and informality that we have. They are more than happy to try to make sure that everyone understands what's going on and it's clear. So I would really strongly urge the executive manager, their extraordinary expertise in town, and their department. Yes?
Another question about the furlough increase in the student base.
Yes.
Those who have that transfer are getting P waiver, who are in your area, in all ways?
I would be, I can't say at first, but my senses that the P waiver would cover that increase as well.
And are there warrants?
I'm sorry?
Are there warrants to live or?
It's a tech, I'm going to have to get that.
I don't think they would know that.
Yeah, I don't think they would know that, but I, since P waiver is generally varmish, I would imagine that we would honor it, but it's just my instinctual reaction. And right behind you, there's a question.
I actually have two questions. The reduction, is that a greenhouse?
I believe it's a reduction pre-tax, so probably what that would mean is that you won't pay as much tax. I don't remember filling those, whereas our president taxes for, I think that is the case, that your, your base pay is not being affected. Your benefits are not being affected, your retirement is not being affected, but you're earning less money. So usually if you're earning less money, that means you pay less taxes because they basically actually pay on how much cash you actually get, right? So you will get less. And some, yes, you'll be a little bit of a tax, but you have a lost salary. There is that. I forget how that question is.
The furlough, I understand, or not, is going to be a solved, you know, solved issue. One of the swords that was held over the CSU were considering furlough was layoffs.
Yeah.
So is that something that's still on the table or is that something that's going to be actually implemented?
It's hard to tell what will happen with layoffs. I can tell you that there will be no layoffs to CSU EU workers for the fall term.
We've got other unions, too.
Other unions, we don't have agreements with those unions, so I, I don't.
Well, if you have an agreement, does that mean after they're going to say there's not going to be no layoffs or is it somehow special, is this the one union and not another?
I cannot answer that because I don't do bargaining at the system level. I can tell you that we were told as part of the CSU agreement, Chancellor Reed would not be sure to be laid off, you know, union employees for the fall term. But I cannot really comment or speculate on what will happen with the other bargaining units. If you're not involved, that's awesome.
Thank you.
And I really am not trying to evade it, I really just don't know.
A question regarding overtime.
Uh huh.
Beginning of every semester, I always seem to do about 50 hours a week.
Yes.
Just because it's the beginning of the semester. And you mentioned something in the non-exempt employees and how they need to deal with overtime.
Yeah.
Any suggestions on how to deal with overtime?
I think there are several offices which incur overtime, especially at the beginning of the year. This would be a year that would be really good to try not to do that. At the same time, you're coming to university and it has to happen. I worry very much. Our payroll office has got to implement these furlough actions. Our payroll office has got to implement these furlough actions manually for everyone. This is an enormous amount of work for them to do, at the same time they're being furloughed today, so we, I'm not certain that's jewelry. So we have to work through it, so we should probably check, because the school must operate, that's the number one thing, when we're just going to try to minimize the overtime, because it just makes the budget harder. Yeah?
Can you comp, like, can it be compensated in comp time and then made up that way?
I don't know about that. We'd have to check. In a normal time, yes, but in furlough time, I don't know.
Because there may be a condition that has to stay late, because it's, because it got comp time, and then in January, well, we.
Let me find out, very, we'll, if you have a choice, as soon as our captain will check, I wish I could tell you how this is. I'm not that skilled.
Are you asking about an exempt or a non-exempt clause? I'm asking about an exempt, putting it, the exempt ones are going to be the challenge. Okay, well.
It's, it's not going to be case we're exempt, like, ever been able to term, that's why it's a little odd to not have.
But we're all in the campus, and we're.
Yeah, we'll find out, Laura. They're a great question, I just.
So I just wondered if that was a factor, that's what we have there one more time.
We'll try to find out. Yeah. What, what's your recommendation for when, and I'm just speculating, for the students
that this, this will affect them? They're going to go home, and they're going to tell their moms and dads.
Yep.
And customer service is going to get phone calls, housing services will get phone calls, residential line will get phone calls. Where do we direct those parents that are angry because they can't, their center waters can't get the services? I don't necessarily want to be directing them to, to President Arminana, because it's not necessarily his fault.
You tell them to call the legislature. Anybody, be a student, be a parent, be a member of the community, or be anybody in this university who thinks that life is going to be the same as it was, they are wrong. Life is not going to be the same, and there's going to be less people doing the same work. And that's it. And, you know, and if somebody has a question about what happens to other units, we are going to achieve, we have a number, by unit, that has to be achieved, it's not a savings in that sense, you know, but a reduction in payroll costs in that unit. And, and the answer is, that is going to be achieved either through furloughs, that some units have agreed to, or layoffs, or non-hire for those units who decide not, would decide to. If anybody thinks that they are not going to be affected one way or another, they will be. Very clear. No, it or both about it. For, you can tell parents, you can tell students, call the legislature. Call the car. Call the boat. Now, perhaps, you know, some of them have to stop going for proposition, and come to where we are.
Thank you.
Does the question have been answered? Yes.
Hi, I just kind of had a question with one of John Scott's, because for performing arts, our guys, when we put up a show, those guys can be there twelve hours a day, and it's been, they've been given comp time in the past, you know, they'll be paid, they can get the comp time to take later, so we'll need to know how to deal with those issues. Some of them, or at least one of them, is an intermittent hourly employee, but the rest are non-kept.
Yeah, thanks for bringing it forward. We will research the question and research in these areas, but we'll get, we'll get that there.
Thank you.
Sure. We, running a little bit out, let's do a few more, yes?
I don't know if you can answer this question, but I remember a vacancy, and if we do go for furloughs, with this furlough plan, do you, someone, do we have to raise the 撥位?
I think the templates that we've outlined for this campus, it's generally been well-received by the people that I've had the privilege to talk to, we'd probably call something similar for the fall, and then we'll get to figure out the spring, we might do something a little different. But pretty much since the fall is going, and very individualized, as you can see, I would imagine that we would call something quite similar for the fall.
Thank you.
Sure. Let me thank each of you for coming and interacting on this topic. I know it's a difficult, one more question up in the corner there.
Can you tell us about grants now?
Grants? Sure. Grants, people are not affected, so if they're working for a big college, or a NASA program, or you're involved with research, there's somebody waiting to be called programs, or if you're involved with research in biology or the opiate, you will not be furloughed, you're exempt. If you are half and half, half of you will get furloughed, the other half will not. And that's what we are, we don't have two basic situations, like, there's more than that, but it's, is that a free, you know, access for grants?
Or, or, or?
Uh, plus five percent. That's our highest.
Okay. Well, yes, well, is my study not furloughed, will be able to come to work this time?
Right, that's probably, the spring gets a little tricky, but the fall, we won't have this problem, because the times that we're closing in the fall, we've all even voted, the grants folks have handled that. In the spring, if we do a closure, that's not the issue, and we need to work that through. Thank you all again so much, I appreciate everyone coming.